Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom, can you open, please?
Good morning and welcome to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, October 10, 2012. Ms. Lori Kukowski has this week's dog.
Good thing she's little because she'd be dragging me all over the room. She's got a lot of energy, a little terrier mix about two years old, she's a female. She will be available on Saturday at her dog kennel. We are at capacity, we have 40 dogs, so we really, really need your help. If you're thinking about getting a dog now would be a great time to help us out. If you want big dogs, we have bigger dogs, older dogs, all kinds of dogs. So come to either the Dog Pound or you can check us out on the website to see what dogs we have available. And the dogs from now on will be spayed or neutered before you are able to take them home and they get most of their shots. And please come and help us out, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, you could arrange that.
I know. Take her home, she's cute.
I mean, we have it delivered for you.
Thank you.
After the spay and neuter.
Right, right. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number 1, we have no job in Family Services Bills, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So moved.
Mr. Williams.
Second.
Mr. Kayla.
Second.
Under the Auditor, accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Auditor, accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a couple personnel matters. Possible hire children of Family First Council, Golden Acres, Dog Pound, and Job Family Services. I'm going to ask for an executive on that, Tom. So I would like to request an executive session to conclusion of our regular board meeting today to talk about those. It's allowable under the sunshine law. Also, we may discuss pending negotiations with the United Steelworkers and the Teamsters. Again, the subject allowable under the sunshine law for executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Authorize payment $1,000 to Culling Funeral Home, Overland, in accordance with the Highway Race Code 5901.29 for Inigent Veteran Robert A. Dietrich from Overland.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Accept the Finley-Davis Actuary Report and establish Lorraine County Healthcare Rates and Contribution Shares for Employees for the Year 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Looks like a 5% increase, Mr. Cordez, about $7 for family a month and $3 for single increase.
It's about a 5.5, 5.7, thereabouts. A little better than I thought, but still, we're not doing as well as they want in the healthcare. Groups getting older and the numbers are shrinking. That's not a very positive direction for a self-insured pool. At one time, we had almost 2,000 contracts with about close to 5,000 participants. Today, we're down to about 1,650 contracts. So people don't think that government has been contracting, and just look at the number of people participating in the healthcare plan. The average age was about 45 of the member, which is a contracted person, and that's up to about 47.8 today.
We're all getting older.
Well, the group is getting older and it's shrinking, so healthcare costs are going up. And they're being diluted over a smaller group and an older, you know, an older group. We're not bringing in newer, younger employees that traditionally would use less healthcare. So the trend is a bit alarming.
I'm surprised with all the, with the new Obama, where we have our children that are under the age of, what, 26?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't that, bringing those people in would lower the age, I would imagine.
The average age of participant has gone down. The average age of the member, which is the employee, has gone up. In fact, with, even with the ability to enroll dependents until age 26, we saw an influx of that when it first became law, about a year and a half, two years ago. We didn't see a lot of census drive on that. They're not heavy utilizers in that age group, so... But you can see that we're still down, close to over 300, 325 members, which would be employees. And this is just as a strictly government plan, so that's government contracting. Plus, our claims are up about $2 million. The utilization's in the hospital and prescription drug, we've been able to put the brakes on a bit. But it's, you know, strange part, as soon as we fix one area and work on another area, it pops out. So at a blended rate, we saw, you know, I'm going to round it up rather than down, no more than 6%, but our claims is up for inpatient care about 18%. And I don't know if that trend is going to abate anytime soon, given the demographics of what's happening to the group. So that's just something to look for going forward into the future. Although, on a blended rate, I think we've had a rather successful year. We're going to be looking for more savings, we're in contract negotiations right now. We received RFPs, we're reviewing those, and we're trying to squeeze a few more dollars out of this negotiation. So I'll be bringing those contracts to you forward for the healthcare here fairly soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, accept on behalf of Eene Township, the improvements to Mallards Edge Subdivision 1, concrete pavement, sanitary and storm service were stalled in 2011. Inspection fees have been paid and the Engineer and Township grants the approval. Plaid of subdivision is recorded in Lorraine County Record of Plats, Volume 97, Page 33 through 35. Mallards Edge Boulevard with road number T-315, commencing at State Route 82 and extending north 497.53 feet or 0.094 miles in length, ending by intersection, intersecting with Legends Way, T-316. Legends Way, commencing west of the intersection of Mallards Edge Boulevard, 295.08 feet, and then extends east from that future development point, Phase 2, 905.75 feet or 0.172 miles in length, ending at a future development point, Phase 2.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Accept on behalf of Eene Township, the improvements to Barrington Park Subdivision Number 4, concrete pavement, sanitary and storm service were stalled in 2011. Inspection fees have been paid and Engineer and Township grants the approval. Plaid of subdivision is recorded in Lorraine County Record of Plats, Volume 97, Page 11, for Chelsa Court, Road Number T-314, commencing at Barrington Drive, T-305, and extending north 430.19 feet or 0.081 miles in length, ending at a cul-de-sac.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Award contract to Lake Erie Construction Company, Norwalk, in the amount of $187,825 for the guardrail replacement projects, Phase 5. Bids were opened on October 2nd, and this was, this one was the only one received. Issue notice, proceed letter, honor before October 22nd, and complete within 90 days and will be paid 100% of all money.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister.
I don't have any additional remarks this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
I have one matter of pending litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Yeah. Well, Halloween's just right around the corner, and there's a woman in Illyria, her name is Maggie Brinker, and every year she collects items for dogs that she takes to local shelters, including the dog kennel. And she looks for things like treats, chew bones, biscuits, food, toys, flea and tick control products, grooming supplies, flea and tick shampoo and conditioner vitamins, and anything else that you can think of that dogs may enjoy. So if you have anything like that, maybe your pet has passed away and you don't know what to do with the items that you have, you can drop them off on her porch, and she is located at 181 Longfellow Street in Illyria. And she does this every year, and it's kind of a cool thing for, something different for Halloween, so I appreciate that. And I know we have people here from 4H. Did you want to come up and did you have some, something you'd like to share with us today? Pull the microphone down so we can hear you. Just tell us what your name is and where you live, dear.
Okay. I'm Chloe Bowling. I live in Grafton. First, I'm just going to thank you for allowing me to be here and to speak for 4H. Today, I'd like to talk to you about how 4H has impacted my life, but first, I'm going to read a letter to you from my sister, Rachel. She was unable to be here because she's at the college right now. So this is her letter. Dear County Commu... Is that okay?
You're good, yeah.
Dear County Commissioners, hello, my name is Rachel Bowling. I am 17 years old and a senior in high school. I apologize for not being able to attend this meeting, but right now, I am sitting in a class at Lorraine County Community College. I am working to complete my prerequisites to enter into the veterinary technician program in the fall semester of 2013. I would not have pursued this career if I didn't recognize my love of learning about animals through 4H. I would like to take a moment to implore you to keep the funding of 4H. I have been involved in 4H for eight years, and it has been one of the best experiences of my life. For many bystanders, 4H seems like a way for children to take their animals to fair, win big trophies, and make money off their hard work. I'm not going to lie, that does happen, but 4H is so much more than the animals at the fair. On average, each summer, children lose 2.6 months of mathematics and two months of reading skills obtained through the school year. However, through 4H, kids' minds are stimulated through the project books. The books require reading, research, mathematics, and hands-on learning activities. 4H provides a goal for children to meet academically throughout the summer. Not only are they learning, but they're pursuing their own personal interests. And this goes beyond animals. Through 4H projects, children explore things such as photography, cake decorating, healthy lifestyles, cooking, music, sewing, carpentry, electricity, drama, and writing. And this is not an exhaustive list. There are many other project options to choose from. Even if project books are not provided for a child's particular interest, they can make their own project through the self-determined project option. I have personally seen this project in action. A girl in our 4H group was interested in small trains, so using the self-determined project, she spent the summer learning more about her passion. Not only are youth learning through their project books, they are also learning about the government and what it is like to be a citizen. In each 4H group, members are elected to fill leadership positions such as President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. Through this process, members are instructed to write a speech and give the speech in front of the club. This stretches kids' abilities for public speaking and leadership. When I held office as President, I experienced the difficulties of leadership, people backing out of promises, being displeased with how you run things, and the importance of organization, to name a few. If it hadn't have been for 4H, I would not have learned these important skills that helped me emphasize with leaders I encounter every day. I could spend hours telling you about how 4H has impacted my life, but I know I don't have that time. In conclusion, I would simply like to say, for the future of the children of Lorraine County, please keep 4H alive. Thank you, Rachel Bowling.
That was a very good letter. You did a very good job presenting it.
You sure did.
We've talked about this many times, and I'll just bring it up, but what is the Board's feelings about restoring funding to 4H?
I think it's a conversation, go ahead.
I was actually going to ask Lisa to come up, and I asked her to find out how much money we had left over from the sale of Green Acres, to see what we have to put towards 4H, because I'm sure all three of us want to.
I think Judge Walter said about $55,000 for this year, wasn't he, around $55,000, $54,000?
This year, $55,400, and there's currently $209,600 left in that fund.
Which leaves us a $31,000 shortfall after we do the solid waste kicking. It's still $103,400, is our participation by code?
It was $103,800, and the Board passed a resolution last year, $17,400 was contributed from solid waste, and then the $55,400 from the Green Acres, and $31,000 from the general fund, which was based on a match provided by, I believe, a fundraiser, something that they had.
The Friends of Junior Fair, correct, yeah. So I think that'll be one of our budget topics when we finish with our numbers and we get our allowable budget for appropriation. Should be, I would guess, the first week of December. When are we going to start budget hearings? Second, third week in November?
You can kind of start the meantime you want.
Okay, I mean, are we ready to start and have the departments come present and do what we did last year?
Well, I haven't, we haven't done anything because we haven't received any, any direction from the Board. We normally start in earnest, and sometime in November, that's been our standard operating procedure.
Right.
But there's no, there's no set platform for that. It can be as the Board wills.
Well, do you want to start scheduling those?
Sure.
Start next week? Break every department down and see where we're at before I ask?
Sure, we can start doing that. I thought Lisa was still there, sorry. We can certainly start doing that, and some of the revenue pictures have cleared up greatly in the last few weeks with regard to casino revenue, and the sales tax is trending fairly nice. I don't anticipate that trend turning negative. It may, it may slow a little bit, but I don't think it's going to turn back negative, so this is a positive.
Well, I was happy with the budget meeting last Thursday, they upped some of the numbers and figures finally, so we have something to work off of. I guess they were all bantering as to what the carryover would be next year. Mr. Snodgrass adjusted his amount in the paper today.
It was nine, 9 million?
Well, he was 7.9 million.
Yeah.
Oh, geez!
So he adjusted a million dollars.
I indicated to Moody's in a on-call, on a rating call, that I thought it would be between 9 and 10 million dollars.
Because we've got, we've got to address the $425,000, I'm assuming Lorraine City Council's going to pass on the board here, said they're happy with that paying off of St. Joe's.
Well, there's several things, and I've been keeping a list with, with the Budget Director and things that have, we've had expenses this year that weren't budgeted for.
Well, we got the one inmate who has had the stroke and is...
Well, we haven't, we haven't done much with that yet.
Right.
But there's been other payments and other things that we've done that need to be paid for. Mindful, I received another, and I think you received it, I wouldn't call it pleading letter from the sheriff, but he was showing us the Flintstone car.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, the vehicles, we haven't had a vehicle replacement program in a significant amount of years. And also, let me state this while we're giving a rosy glowing overview of the casino money and the tax, sales tax, revenue is still down several millions of dollars.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not out of the woods. There's been some positive signs on some of the revenue stream, but there's still a great amount of negativity, specifically in interest income. Fees are starting to come back, but interest income is in the basement, it's not in the basement, it's in the sub-basement, and I don't see it coming out anytime soon. Remember, we went from over 7 million to just barely over a million.
Almost 8 million.
Well, our next issue though also is what they come up with the real estate evaluation. We should have those numbers in the next two weeks. Did March 3rd say the 1st of November?
I have a meeting to go to tomorrow, they're going to discuss it.
You're going to discuss it, are they going to present the numbers, and it will know where we're going to be at, so we can make sure inside millage is covered?
We've been working on the inside millage. We're going to, we're going to tease that real hard and try to squeeze some savings out of it. Mindful, we do have the savings coming from the refinancing of the Justice Center bonds.
I meet with my Budget Director twice a week, brought up those issues, actually just yesterday, so...
So it'll be coming out.
Right.
And so we'll be able to lower the, the actual inside millage dedicated to debt service thereby increasing the amount available for operations. But all of those situations are not going to completely solve the revenue issue for 2013.
Correct.
Did you have a comment, ma'am?
Yes, on behalf of 4H.
Okay, just state your name and your address.
My name is Deborah Lind, I live in Lorraine, 4651 Queen Anne Avenue, and I am a 4H advisor for Lorraine County Cartoons and Youth Leadership of Lorraine. I'm representing our students. 4H have evolved so much from being in the rural areas, we're now in the urban areas of Lorraine, and it is really impacting our young people. I have a letter that they have written to the Commissioners, because they're in school. Dear County Commissioners, we are writing on behalf of 2,000 4H youth members and 365 adult volunteers who make up the Lorraine County 4H program. We are in desperate need of your help and pleading for your support. We are requesting that you would please consider restoring the funding to OSU Extension for fiscal year 2013. We realize that Lorraine County is experiencing some financial challenges also, but extension and the work with the 4H program is essential in this community. In the communities to the east as well as the west of Lorraine, the Commissioners realize the significance of Extension Office and the 4H program. They have poor resources and found the means to keep their positive youth development a major part of those communities. There is no doubt for your desire to support our youth and continue to help us evolve into contributing, tax-paying citizens in the future. 4H offer us positive youth development through leadership development, educational opportunities, and life skill coaching, and life challenges in all of us. Our 4H and volunteers are making a difference in Lorraine County. We contribute to a variety of community service projects and learning by doing activities, which is what it takes to become positive leaders while staying out of the criminal justice system. Again, we are pleading for your help and support to ensure that we have every opportunity to be the best that we can be by restoring all the funding for Lorraine County 4H Extension. We are available to answer any questions, discuss the impact of this program, or have all of us attend one of your meetings to share our life experiences with you. Whatever it takes to have your consideration of funding, we are willing to do. Sincerely, Lorraine County 4H Cartoons. Thank you so much. This program is vital to Lorraine County youth. In Lorraine County, especially in urban areas and as in rural areas, there have been funding cuts all over, and our young people don't have a YMCA to go to. A lot of cuts have been through the parts and recreations, so positive youth development is vital for their future, especially with a lot of the older students. And that's why we are here, and I'm thankful to many and all the other volunteers that's helping us, because before we got involved, a lot of our young people did not know 4H existed. And so it is making a difference in Lorraine County. I thank you for your time.
It's kind of different when I drive around the city of Lorraine, actually seeing 4H on people's cars. I've never seen that before in my first 40-some years of being alive, so you've done a very good job being in some of the program. That's an important program. I've been participating out there and, you know, doing the auction for 30-some years as a private sector businessman and then as a Commissioner, so it's very important. Guys do a great job, and we'll see you November 1st for the volunteer recognition, so...
Well, I know firsthand with the Lorraine, going to Longfellow and doing the involvement with the Lorraine City Schools with 4H, teaching them life skills as far as how to manage their money. I would put this program right up there with DARE, as far as what it means to the kids in Lorraine County, and you're absolutely right, it does keep the kids out of the criminal justice system by having them involved in projects and learning how to be a good citizen. And, you know, we went through, we thought we were looking at a $10 million deficit last year, actually a year ago, for coming up, and then the numbers came down, the levy failed, the numbers came down. And I think it's something that we are going to have to look at, restoring this, as far as other counties that are paying for the 4H. I know some organizations may get upset because they're saying you're picking one organization over another, but this truly is a county-wide project, and I hope the Board will take a look at this and see how important it is to the residents, not just in the rural areas, but for all of Lorraine County, and bring back the support on it.
Actually, Tom, actually, discussions the other day in a group I was speaking to was, when you have these type of programs, you put less into your criminal justice system in domestic, and I mean, it's a major issue, and I've always been a big proponent. I mean, we waited right till the end to cut you a couple years ago, and then Lisa Fox and the Friends of Junior Fair jumped right in, and with the sale of Green Acres, we were able to. So we'll look, as we get through the budget process, the evaluation of the real estate's going to have an impact on our budget, and that's just getting done, so. As I said, if we can start the budget hearings, probably start with the judges, if we even have to have hearings or just take what their journal entry is, that would be the first place to start, I would guess. And then follow with the sheriff is the next larger budget.
We'll pull out the template we used last year, send it to you, you can make some suggestions on it, and then we'll get a process going. How's that sound for a starting point? I know we have some new judges coming in as well, and there's one race in domestic relations. With the races, it won't be decided until November. Maybe we can bring in the winners as well to have them participate in that. I know it's kind of unusual, but... That would be completely up to the...
That'd be up to the judges.
The judges.
The judges would determine that, Tom, and they've got, Judge Bensinse will still be there, Judge Burrows.
They, they have a procedure they use with regard to how they reach agreement on certain aspects of court administration that's globalized between all the courts, and I'm not sure what their process is, but I can suggest that to them for you if you'd like, that we should have inclusion of that. And they may well have that already on their minds to do. They're usually pretty good about indoctrinating incoming new judges, except those with the opposite party, Tom. Yeah, well, I've learned that, you know. I inherited the budget, so I'm trying to give a fair shake to them.
I think they go through to the judicial training part, once they're elected, they I think they go through to the judicial training part. Once they're elected, they learn about county budgeting.
Well, I just wanna say, I would have to ask my fellow commissioners to make 4H a priority also. I was a 4H member. I was the Midnight Riders. It was a 4H group out of Vermillion with my horse Christie Girl. And it was a great program. And I remember I wanted to spend the whole week at the fair and spend the night, every night, all week long. And my parents wouldn't let me do that. And now as a commissioner, I get to go out there all week long if I want to. So my dreams came true. But it is a great program. And the fair just would not be the fair if 4H wasn't part of Lorraine County. So we definitely need to make it a priority and try to find funding from wherever, whatever avenue we can get it from. What are you looking at?
You had a horse.
I had a horse.
But you fell off the donkey the first year out of.
I know. I thought for sure. I had horses, rode horses.
You should have learned from.
And I couldn't ride a donkey.
Donkeys aren't very kind to her.
I, I, yeah, I guess not. I guess not. I got that one, Tom. But I do remember you.
Yeah, I fell off the donkey about five times, yeah.
Yeah.
They're trained to make sure you, they get you off of them.
And you haven't been back on since.
No, I haven't. So. Did anybody else have a comment about 4H while we're on this topic? No? Okay. End of my report.
Busy week. I serve on the Workforce Development Committee for the County Commissioners Association. We had a conference call on Thursday. Jim got a rough draft to send you. We made some adjustments.
Is that the CCO's position with regard to the?
The updated.
Governance platform?
Correct. Some issues with the realignment of the areas. And then they're talking about rebranding all the organizations and taking a state brand.
Actually, you know, a state brand would be, I think, a fairly good idea because we can, we can put a minor local brand underneath that.
That was the intent to allow us to.
Right.
Because there's some groups that really have, Franklin County has a brand they've used a long time.
The only thing, the only thing I'll say is they've been, you know, we've, we've been loathed the prin- letterhead for six years because they've been talking about the rebranding for six years.
I think it's coming now.
I do too. It'll give a little bit of more, you know, uniformality to the various one-stop activities. So we anticipate that. The thing that the WIB board and so forth are staunchly against is the consolidation of the local boards into globalized boards. And our fear that we'll probably lumped into a board with Cuyahoga County. Cuyahoga does a good job for their particular situation that they experienced in their community, but their experiences are completely different than, than what's, what we need here. And.
Well, if this goes forward, maybe through Rich Frederick, the Director of the Workforce Transformation Department, maybe we can plead our case on what the alignment's going to be is.
Let me, let me, I think I told you this, and you probably do know it, but I'll bring it forward. My understanding is that they cannot consolidate a county into a different board without the agreement of the legislative body of that community.
Correct.
So it would take a positive vote by this board to allow that consolidation to happen. And my understanding from the various WIB boards, at least in, in the areas that I get into, which are many with workforce development, they're not gonna find a lot of willing counties that are already operating independently.
Well, they weren't aware of that when they were first pushing this program down, that they didn't have a final say.
They didn't know that they, yeah, thank you. They didn't know that.
They didn't know they didn't get the final say, so.
So I think that they're backing off of that a little bit.
But they are talking about the change in how they're going to, how they want the programs administered and delivery methods. And from our point, Mike Longo's over there now, correct?
Yes, Mike Longo works for us now.
And he's running that up our opinions. Should he have input on this? The commissioner said maybe if we send it to our people who are doing it and let them read our updated platform.
I have a, I have a draft proposal for the board that I will send you this week indicating what, what, between the Workforce Investment Board that you appoint as a rather large board.
The WIB.
The WIB. And, and your Workforce Development Professionals, what we may develop as a, our platform locally to send to both CCO and the state. And I'll have that to you in a day or two.
Well, I can include that in my package because right now it's just in draft form, looking for the local.
I'll send it to you and you guys can chop on it and send it back. The state's got some good suggestions. Some of it is a hangover from prior administrations. They had, they done, they did some good work, but they didn't get it launched. And it's been relooked at and added to. So I, I think some of the changes that they wanna do are positive. One of the things the state of Ohio must do, must do, is apply for waivers for specific programming that makes sense for the state of Ohio. Ohio, for a long time, was last in applying for federal waivers of the stringent requirements from DOL to effectuate programming that makes sense to Ohio for Ohio companies. And we need to do a better job on that. And I know that the state is starting to do a better job on that, but we still lag greatly behind in, in asking for a program that is uniquely specific to us.
That's been one of our complaints at the Board of Commissioners throughout the state, that they're not asking for the waivers. Let us craft what's best for our employers and employees.
I think they're heading in the right direction. I think that there's gonna be a lot of positive outcomes. But, but we've done a lot of work locally. We have the demand occupation. We have a lowest cost solution. You know, we, we have Lorraine County first. I mean, these are all programming decisions that have been made locally to reinvigorate our local programming here. And they're working very successfully. And I'll, I'll send you some statistics, if you'd like, from the workforce development to show you how we're, how we're serving people here in Lorraine County. It's, it's, it's been a rough two or three years revamping all of that programming to make sure that the dollars were spent more wisely. As you know, several years ago, it was a free fall. People would pick whatever they wanted and there was other solutions that were available that were less costly. We had a lot of cherry picking by priorities, schools, not priority. The word evades me for a moment, but the, the certain, certain schools.
Industries, certain industries.
Certain schools knew how to access
Right.
federal dollars and were advertising and driving students to us to participate when we didn't really feel that there was a job market for that, that skill set out there. And it was very expensive. We've been able to drop the total cost per individual training account, an ITA, significantly to the point where we've lowered the cap for the ITA. To follow that, because the spending in the ITA has probably decreased probably, I wanna say about 35% per enrollee. And while everything else is going up and tuition costs are going up and training costs going up, our ITAs are dropping in cost because we're squeezing out more value.
So we get more dollars to spend at more bodies.
Well, it started when the federal government had less money to give to the state and the state gave us less money. We had to find a way of achieving the same outcomes with fewer dollars. And that meant going to a lower cost, lowest cost solution. And I can give you an example. If you wanna become an LPN, it costs twice as much to do that at Remington than it does to do it at Lorraine Community College. So we try to steer people into the direction of an outcome that they're seeking, but also spending the dollars as wisely as possible.
Also this week, Solid Waste Policy Committee met. Again, the big talk is how the state's trying to restructure, how solid waste is going to be done. The EPA Director is still talking about just eight districts around the state of Ohio. Where Lorraine County is a solo district, we'd be one of 10 or 11 counties in a group. The Commissioners Association is arguing against that. And actually, some of the bureaucracy is starting to back down from that just because of delivery models, competition, landfills.
Is that the EPA that's driving that?
Yes, it's the Director himself. So we're still working on that.
Is that the guy we met down in, when we were down there?
No. This is, he's only been on board about a year and a half.
Didn't we meet with, okay.
We didn't meet with the new director, no.
Okay.
But it's his driving that it should be consolidation. But I think all the statistics are showing that it probably doesn't. Lorraine County's rate in the last four years, oh, we were less than 10%. We're now at 41% recycling between residential and industrial and commercial. We're not quite at the 50% benchmark. We've made great strides with the programs we've implemented.
Their benchmark was 25%.
And it's raised up to 50 now.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
If you get the court program into some of the communities that don't have the court program.
It's over. We've raised it. Exactly.
It, it'll, it'll grow over that number very, very quickly. And we still have a few of the logic, you know, we have at least one large community that's not on the court system yet. The, while it's, it's a pain, as we all know, it, it has produced the results that people indicated it would produce.
They wanna take us over now that we're successful, basically.
Well, isn't that the best way to do things? Let somebody else do all the work.
The private sector haulers have been the push behind this.
Oh, good.
So. Also, I met with Mayor Rittenau and Robert Fowler from the city of Lorraine yesterday in regards to sewer issues throughout all the townships, the out-of-city rates. And in particular, the Albany Avenue Sewer Project. I have some paperwork. Jim, you weren't able to make the meeting yesterday?
Yeah, I got back a little late from the airport.
So I got some paperwork for you to look at. Busy week. Also, last week, it somehow got missed. Former county commissioner Herb Jacoby passed away. I was at the funeral home. A lot of people I haven't seen in a long time. Herb was well-loved. He did a great job. And he was the guy who helped start 911, which you've carried on, Commissioner. Also Avon Lake, busy week. They had everything going in Avon Lake. I spent most of the week in there between ordering pizza, parades, and pancakes.
And our event last night, candidate's night.
Yeah, candidate's night last night. Amherst Mean Street had a great event for them and their fire department. Thank you, Oberlin, for their candidate's night. They did a very nice job presenting. And I think that's it for my report. Oh, are we gonna talk about, I did talk to the mayor yesterday of Lorraine. And he said they're gonna have a proposal to present to their Lorraine City Council on the $425,000. So we should have it next Wednesday.
We can go ahead and approve our $425,000 today.
I don't have the paperwork out here or the resolution done.
Do it next week.
And the paperwork's on my email. I got it yesterday afternoon.
They're not going to be putting in any additional requirements.
We don't have an agreement with the city of Lorraine, Tom.
I know. I'm just saying that they're not going to put in requirements that they will pass theirs based on the county doing something.
No, I think it's two separate deals. Tom, it's two separate deals. It's us and them. We both go into 425. If one of us says no.
I understand that two separate deals. I'm just hoping that they're not gonna do a combination and put it on a time restriction because it's due next week.
I didn't get any that they were gonna do or not do. I'm sure they're gonna do an ask of us, but I don't think that's anything to our contract with the state of Ohio. But we did get, did you see it yesterday, the final contract I got late yesterday afternoon in my email from Doug Rangel? Did you see it?
No, I didn't.
Last proposals we got late afternoon, probably 2:30, 3 o'clock it came email. And I haven't had a chance to read through it to make sure it's everything we said, so. That's why I don't wanna go forward on it. That's my report. Your turn, Tom.
Actually, I wanted to bring, you mentioned something because Mr. Cordez, I thought you scheduled a meeting with the city of Lorraine to go over the sewer issues.
Well, I did. And as I indicated to you, they, they also asked, when we were making the meeting, that if possible Commissioner Kewell was available, they wanted, the mayor requested he be at the meeting also.
I was going over some Sheffield Township issues, Tom. It wasn't the whole rate thing, but it was, we talked about the contract overall, but I was talking about Sheffield Township issues.
Are they going, I know we were more specific. We were asked for data over a week ago.
I didn't do anything like that. That was the stuff you and Jim were working on.
The data, my understanding from the meeting was the data components that were requested were going to come from Corey Timko to Neil. And I see Neil shaking his head yes, but I don't know if he's received them or not.
No.
Okay, but they were deliverable to you, right Neil? We all had a little assignment from the meeting. My assignment was to get, you know, start discussing possible collaboration on a solution with regard to the INI in that sewer area. And our ability to put some money in, especially since we've used stormwater money before to deal with INI.
They did mention something about some flow stuff they were gonna get back to you on. I didn't, I wasn't talking.
So you didn't really talk about the sewer stuff?
I did talk about sewer stuff, but not the sewer stuff that you were working on.
Okay, what about the, the service fees?
I didn't do any of that. That's the discussion you were having with Jim Cordez. The board agreed to let Jim do that.
Right, well.
I was handling some other issues that I've gotta get to Jim to look at in regards to Albany Avenue Sewer and Sheffield Township. That was my meeting.
Yeah, they, no, they told Mr. Cordez yesterday, correct me if I'm wrong, that basically that was a meeting yesterday.
Well, he wasn't here though at the meeting time, so I met with him on my issue. Jim wasn't here.
Yeah, he met with him on the way out though. And he said, oh, it's already discussed. That's why we were, I was trying to find out what's going on.
No, I just said Sheffield Township.
All right. So we need to get that meeting rescheduled again to try to get this resolved. Again, we talked about it a little bit last week. Actually, I think you may have stepped out since the meeting went so long.
Yes.
Take a little break.
Had to take a break.
The data, actually, that Corey Timko provided, or lack of data, doesn't show that the INI is causing flooding in the residents' homes in the city of Lorraine. Actually goes through a different system.
Okay, they talked about some flow things they were doing, but I didn't, you know, get into that conversation because you guys were setting some of that. The board agreed to let Jim talk to them about that, so.
Okay. And just the service fee really isn't, when you take a look at what they're trying to achieve, is it gonna come or fix any of the issues? The mayor's saying that they wanna use it for INI to help with the flooding. Well, the flooding does actually go to the city of Lorraine from Amherst Township. So you do have a large portion of homes there that they're charging a service fee really for nothing.
Well, what does a flood then? It's gotta, INI has to affect something, a treatment plan or something.
Well, what it would do is it wouldn't go through the, it could be stored at the retaining system, but they can't even prove that that system has met full capacity. It's 800,000 gallons. So. But I mean, I understand with the EPA, but the EPA is more focused on the city of Lorraine. They said the majority of the issue is right there, so.
I, I, I think there's a couple, a couple of things here. First, I, I don't believe that the flooding problem being specifically caused by the Hidden Valley subdivision. I do believe, though, that there's possibly a great amount of INI. And we recognize the INI. Let's go back.
Oh, yeah.
Back in 2001, prior to any of you being here, the INI was an issue. That was the big barrier that stalled the hookup of the Amherst Township sewer extension. And we, we worked that out by putting in retention tanks. And in fact, once we, we paid, the city did the project, and I was surprised to learn the project changed. Neil told me about some of the changes they made on, they put a better system in than the one that was originally proposed. But I didn't follow through with that because I had other things to do. I just got the negotiations done and that was in other people's hands. That said, they, they should be able to retain as much water as necessary there because the Amherst Township has not built out. It has not come close to whoever developed those expectations in the 90s of what was gonna happen in that corridor, how much flow was gonna come off of that, that sewer extension. That said, the INI was never dealt with 10 years ago. And it wasn't dealt with now, so.
It doesn't get better. It only gets worse.
Right. The, the fee extensively, what I'm understanding it for now, although it's, it's been several topics of why the fee, is that they're treating a lot of INI. Because once it enters the sewer system, it has to be treated as if it was regular sewage. It's nowhere separating that out. So they're experiencing additional treatment cost. That position, it may be completely candid, it may not be, but it does have some merit that, that they're, they're treating a lot more than, than they anticipated or what the sewer bills would be there to routinely pay for. So I specifically said to them, then let's fix the problem.
Right. Well, that's the one thing that we're looking for in the data is to actually get the numbers to show that there truly is an INI. Because they have no data to prove that.
Well, maybe they didn't discuss that because Jim wasn't in the room.
No.
That wasn't a part I was having. I mean, when I met with the mayor yesterday, maybe that's why they didn't discuss those issues with me.
I, I think the INI problem was probably legitimate, but that's all new plastic pipe up in Hidden Valley. And when I say new, it's still very, it's old, but it's not, we, we don't see as much.
Industry standards.
Right. We don't see, see a lot more INI with clay tile and, and all the concrete sewers. This is all plastic up there. There's, there's possibly some, some areas of infiltration that can be corrected rather easily, but we gotta smoke test and dye test and scope that whole system up there. We're never gonna get anything done until we start that. The city, I thought the answers from the city were candid. They said they're, that the EPA is beating them up on some of the older areas so, so badly that they're concentrating those energies in some very, very old areas. And that's fine, but we're adding additional fee here so that we need to give a priority to this area. I think that we should work collaboratively with them. We should bring some money. It's a stormwater issue with infiltration into the sanitary sewers. We should get them to participate. And we should at least start letting the residents know we're working on a longer-term solution. I don't think it's gonna be fixed tomorrow, next month, or possibly not within a year. But I would like to have a clear line of sight to some, some specific resolution. And, and so that we can solve the problem of the INI and then we can get into the issue of what the, whether there should be a fee or not a fee. That's above my pay grade. Right now, I just wanna fix the problem.
I'm just looking for the data to actually prove it instead of going through. I know, we talked about actually putting cameras through the sewers, trying to find issues with it. But the simple thing is smoke tests. Really, nothing's been done.
I think in the find over the last 25 years, there's probably some, some downspouts been hooked up, some pumps been hooked up. The, the, it, it's a little hard to catch all the, the downspouts aren't too bad unless they're going into a crock and the sun pumps pumping them out. If, there's ways of installing that, that will prevent even a smoke test from, from flushing out. So we, we need to do more aggressive work. Remember, we've been doing this on our package plans for two years. We, we relined the sewers and then our, we got that infiltration down. We got even more because now the sewer wasn't leaking, leaching water. And our INI actually increased because we had so many illegal hookups. So I believe the same thing has happened over time in the subdivision area, and we need to deal with that.
Did Carney use up all the era money that we got from Obama, the loan and the, the grant, 1.8, 1.8?
Yes, in fact, we were able to reduce the overall cost and we didn't draw on all of that loan money. It's, it's been closed out. But we, it was, we were fortunate. Remember, it was supposed to be dollar for dollar. We borrowed X and we were granted X as under the stimulation grant. Well, they also, they allowed us to, any reduction in cost savings that we would achieve, they allowed it to use the stimulus money first. So we had to end up borrowing a lot less money than we anticipated. And Ken and his folks did a great job on that and brought the cost. Ken and his folks did a great job on that and brought the cost down significantly instead of packing with a debt service on that very low interest note to match that is probably only about 70% or 65% of what we thought it was going to be.
Great.
Uh, the coroner, everyone get to the left side. I was looking at $15,000. Uh, one thing that we haven't really talked about was moving them. You know, we've, Jim, you and I have kind of gone back and forth.
It's all gone back and forth. I'm not even sure where we're at with, with them right now. The last thing I remember was that none of them are completely suitable, but the, Dr. Evans did indicate he wasn't going to scrap with the board very much. The, the, the area that still makes, in my mind, the most sense for us is trying to get somebody in that condo over there on One Park Landing. We're paying $7,000 or $8,000 in condo fees every year. They just put up a really nice, new, cool sign out there and you're paying for it. And you're not using any of it because it's part of the condo association. We either need to significantly drop the price of trying to sell that condo or we need to get somebody in there because that money's coming out of transit right now. We inherited that condo. We didn't buy it. You didn't buy it. It came with the package deal. The, the, I know that the Chamber has a similarly sized condo, has dropped their price below 150 for their condo.
125.
125.
That's what we'll take.
Okay. Uh, those condos at their prime were running in the 250, 270,000 range. But things, things are different. So we either dump it or we got to put somebody in there to get those bills paid. That's, again, I don't think Doc Evans is going to argue too much. It's not a, you know, preferred location. He wanted something closer to EMH.
We have the Columbia Gas and I know they kind of went back and forth with some of the people there.
Yeah, he wasn't, he wasn't overly excited about the Columbia Gas building. And the thing with the Columbia Gas building is we would have to relocate a bunch of folks where the condo is, is empty right now and we're paying a lot of bills on the condo. But I can have another discussion with them. It's just, there's so many other priorities that is somewhat fallen by the wayside.
He's going to need that money. I mean, the amount of heroin, the opiate problem, everything else. He's just.
Well, I agree to 15,000 he's going to need, but for next year, just saving some of that money. If we go to the condo, your point is basically we're paying ourselves, so.
Well, we are, but you're going to, it's going to increase your costs to go to the condo. I got to tell you that now because that condo is co-owned and with the FTA and it has not been depleted, it won't be depleted for a long period of time, so we have to charge what's a reasonable market rate on that. So we're paying about 16,000 in Auburn right now. Given, given the, how much square footage and what our condo fees over there, I'm assuming we're going to go into the low 20s. Low to mid 20s on what we can reasonably charge without having FTA interference, but let me say this. That supports your transit. Revenue raised from the condo will support, that goes right into transit. FTA encourages those kind of activities.
Well, you brought up transit because I missed it in my report last night. I was at the Board of Elections a little bit after 5, 5:30. And the Cleveland route came in and it was packed full.
You want to talk about that for a moment?
Ken, I mean, it was.
It's, some of them are coming in packed and some of them are not.
Right.
I, I'm going to be looking this week at possibly jiggling those times a bit. We're, we're holding steady at upper 20s, low 30s. It's not enough ridership. We're, we're working to get the advertising done, but as you know, getting, getting everything prepared at the printers and everything, getting it on the buses takes a little bit of time. We have, we have three or four people that are willing to advertise, they're having their ads prepared. We have a couple of small wraps going on. But it's still not going to be enough to, to bring the service close to where it needs to be, I think, to satisfy the board. But let me state this again, and I'm going to continue to state it even when you get mad. The FTA does not count Fairbox as local dollars.
Comes off the.
And without, without a revenue stream, whether it be a levy, a tax, or, you know, a sugar daddy somewhere, I don't care. We're always going to need local money. How much local money we're going to need is what I'm trying to bring down to its lowest level possible. If FTA would allow Fairbox to be used as, you know, local match, we'd be in much better shape. Than, than we are right now.
As I explained the other night, if it's $100 to run a bus and you have $10 in Fairbox, there's 90 bucks that you think is your 50%.
Yeah. And the truth, the truth is, the more successful you are, the less federal money you get.
Correct.
On the other issue that came up, I didn't get a chance to read it completely through today. There's going to be, the casino's working with a group to actually $10 round trip and then you get a $15 credit.
Lakefront Lines, yep.
Yeah, I'm assuming that something like that was going to happen and the, you, it happens in a lot of the cities. The, the, so would it happen here? Sure. If Lakefront's going to run a charter in there, they'll find some parking locations. So my next step is going to be to try to rent them some bus slips over at the transportation center. Because we have very, we have the best parking in Lorain County. It's secure, it's lighted and has cameras on it. So if we can't bus them, we might as well park them and get a bus slip fee for, and that money again will be used to support local transit activities.
Still not going to resolve the fact that we need to use our buses or they're going to take them away from us.
Well, we'll deal with that. If we could, if we can be successful to the route into Cleveland, people now have at least, if they have no other option, they still have a way to get to the airport. They will have to take a RTA bus out of Cleveland to get to the airport, but they can get there. We, this service can be successful, but it's going to always need some assistance. And I think we'd have more ridership if we were running the line on the weekend and later at night. We haven't done that because we're trying to get need ridership. At the same time, we're trying to use convenient ridership to support that need ridership. Most people that want to go to the casino are going to go in the evening, so they're going to go earlier, but they're not going to want to come home at 6 o'clock. And of course, people that recreate on the weekends, we don't have service on the weekend whatsoever. So taking the bus in in the morning, spending the day in Cleveland, coming home late at night, I actually think that's a fairly good idea. But we don't offer that service right now. And I'm, I'm loathe to ask you to expand the service, but these hours don't seem to be the strongest potential for.
We have some gaps there with the times that are leaving.
Exactly.
Brentwood, any update on that? Brentwood, regarding the lake?
I, I have a team that's positioned to go out tomorrow afternoon. Several, several people, the engineer, stormwater people, township people, you know, a whole bunch. But I have not gotten agreement from the property owner as of right now. I'm working on it.
What, and what time is that?
Uh, I think it's at 3 o'clock. I have to check my schedule.
Okay.
But, but I have, you know, I have some engineers scheduled to come up. The, the, but I will tell you, if I don't receive agreement from the property owners, I'm, I'm not going to go on the property.
Right.
Not that I think anybody's going to be standing there with a shotgun. I, I don't believe that for a moment, but I don't want to get into a potential.
Private property rights.
Right.
You don't want to get chased off by the sheriff again.
Well, I prefer not. It's not the experience that makes my week. But it is private property.
Right.
We do need to be on the property for a few of the things that we may want to take a look at. And I really wanted to go out there sooner because in order to get the best look, we may have had to go out there and beat down some, you know, a path through some of the weeds and so forth. Not to mention that if we continue to rain like this, we may not be able to see the areas that are there we want to see because the ground will be extremely soft. But I've made about, let me say, six or seven phone calls trying to get access to the property with, with no success, which is a little frustrating, but we'll continue to try.
On Saturday, actually during the Ohio State football game, was invited out by the Township trustees for a tailgate party at the Township Association President Bob White's house. I want to thank him. I want to thank all the volunteers that have been working on the regional police district out in the townships. A lot of hard work going in there. These individuals have been putting in 10, 20 hours a week to get the, get the issue out to the residents and making sure that they're aware of it. I know a lot of people walking in the cold, in the rain and that on Saturday and then went outside to a bonfire and then watched the game. And luckily, Ohio State won big, so. I'm very pleased with that outcome and coroner at sewers. And just so you know, I've been asked to meet with the residents again regarding the sanitary sewer. So I will be meeting with them at 9:00 AM at one of my favorite locations, Park Avenue in Amherst.
Tomorrow?
Monday. So if you want to stop by and Lori, you told me that we had lunch at Ziggy's or someone told you that.
Yeah.
It wasn't me and you. It was actually my assistant Neil, so.
I'm trying to figure this out. Neil must be wearing a wig during the day.
You know, I felt bad for Neil and then I felt bad for Lori too, so.
I felt bad for me. I didn't think you guys invited me to lunch after the meeting.
I know you were there too, so.
Uh, I just passed you a note.
Yes, Kathy Schuster is that?
She runs real estate for Spitzer. She returned our call this morning while we're in the meeting, so we have permission to go on the property. She said she had some kind of email problem that's, that's, I'm glad because normally we get response from that organization pretty quickly, so it was surprising. So, good. So it looks like it's going to be a go tomorrow unless the weather precludes that.
I'd like to see all the waters running there. I mean, that's one of the major issues.
Right. And then just a reminder, on Thursday, the 18th, we have the Lorain County Township Association meeting and Aleria Township. So, end of my report.
And don't forget the Tea Party Candidates event is Saturday morning, I believe, this week or next week, isn't it?
Why would Tom care about the Tea Party?
I didn't know about it, actually. The only one I remember is when I was running and Joe Cazura actually insulted them.
I heard of.
Yeah, so between him and Anthony Giardini, thank you. I appreciate it.
2 o'clock today is the Records Commission meeting for correspondence.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Public comment?
David's back.
Any good chance to talk to you the other night? Tell, you were busy. David Ashenhurst Oberlin, two things I hope can be answered without using my time. One is to say for the viewing audience what INI is. Because you, you use a lot of acronyms. Most of them came out, but you never actually said what INI is when you were discussing the sewer issues.
Infiltration.
And what's the other one?
Inflow? Inflow, infiltration. It's when water seeps into the pipes and.
Well, your seep center is put in.
Yeah, seep center is put in by downspouts and things.
Okay. Second thing that I would hope that there can be a little comment on without using my time. The administrator used the word stormwater twice, but neither was in reference to the stormwater district meeting, which I believe took place yesterday.
It was canceled.
It was canceled. Okay. Well, that's interesting and I couldn't get to it. But I would have gone to it and I will tell you why. In the thing I do want to say, in your board correspondence, you'll see that number 14, I think it's 14, refers to the Black River Rap. And I'm sorry, our young friend from 4H who was so attentive for so long finally got bored when you were talking about INI so much and, and left. But Black River Rap is of course the Black River Remedial Action Plan. It is now about 20 years old. None of the current commissioners were on the board when the commissioners named people to that, that coordinating group many years ago. It meets about quarterly. It met yesterday. It will meet again in January and I'm hoping that the commissioners at that time will send a representative to that meeting and sort of reacquaint themselves with what, what's going on.
Don't we have a rep that goes there? I think we've always had.
She wasn't there yesterday.
And what's the alternate?
And stormwater, these are folks that don't even exactly know there is a Stormwater Management District.
Well, see, here's, there's a couple of issues with that. We're not completely countywide, right? And so.
I understand. I, what I'm trying to point out is when, at times, we've had a coordinator for the watershed in the Community Development Department. We don't at the moment. The chair of that body has been the Health District Commissioner who is retired. The other person who used to go is Jim Body. He is retired. The Solid Waste Conservation District wasn't there and most of the people who used to go from there have retired. Carl used to go many years ago.
Soil and Water Conservation District.
Soil and Water Conservation District, exactly. And Ken Pierce used to go to the Community Alliance meetings and the Health District hasn't reestablished who will go, how that will be handled from now on. So I'm hoping that, as I pointed out in this meeting, two things. One of the big subjects was a Lorain County Health District Community Health Improvement Plan results were presented. It's a slideshow. It was very interesting. 1,500 residents surveyed. 1,500 adults, 1,000 youth by another, by somewhere in northwest Ohio conducted the survey to make sure it wasn't terribly biased. Whole lot of information about the health status of people in Lorain County. And that was presented by the Health District in the absence of sort of presenting anything about how many fish tumors we have these days, which is what they spent a lot of time working on for a long time. The idea that the water quality of the Black River is going to be in part determined by how we manage stormwater and how much stormwater is instead being processed through infiltration and infusion into the sanitary sewer system. All these things are sort of related. And additionally, one of the questions in this health status survey going forward was what, what do we need to do more of and less of and things like that? We talked a lot about local food and nutrition education in the schools and 4H. We actually talked about some of that stuff. But the other thing we talked about a little bit was hydraulic fracturing. And the reason we talked about it was because in many places, fracking is either causing problems to surface water, having interactions with, with farmers. I asked the county engineer who also wasn't there and would be at a stormwater management meeting, which I had wanted to go to partly to ask him this. County engineer confirmed to me that trucks aren't allowed to park on bridges and pump water out of the Black River. Even though they can pump water out of the Black River, they aren't allowed to park on bridges and do that. Trucks have been seen pumping water out of the Black River in Lorain County. It may have been because farmers were looking for water for, during the drought last summer, but it may have been because hydraulic fracturing takes water out of our water system and doesn't put it back in. And so all these things relate to the health of the Black River and its presence through the whole county. I hope the county commissioners will, and, and of course, the money for the rap comes from NOACA because of clean water and clean air, not because they're that interested in ecosystems and and fish and fish tumors or fish stocking and, and things like that. So I hope somewhere in the commissioner's office through community development, through stormwater management, to the extent you're involved in it and these other issues, the commissioners will sort of reinterest themselves in the Black River Rap and what goes on with it. And that they in turn will get reconnected with the Community Alliance, which was the source for a lot of the information coming back from the rap on the interaction of land use, farm runoff, stormwater management and all that. So, and, and, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention with respect to that. The meeting that, I think Commissioner Kukowski, you were there and I, I don't remember if anybody else was, but the Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium meeting, which we were both at and these folks at the Black River Rap had sort of no concept of. I reported to them that Congresswoman. the Black River RAP had sort of no concept of. I reported to them that Congresswoman Capter had referred to this area as the Netherlands of the Great Lakes, that we're like a great sponge. We have more sort of water management issues in this area than really any other part of the Great Lakes coastal area. So that surface water, groundwater, underground water, stormwater, and lake water all have some interactions. I hope the commissioners will, this isn't costing anybody any money that we don't have. It just means going to some meetings and, and having interactions on these things, and looking at the interactions of community development and water management. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by both the administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.